Let's call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, the 4th of November, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Here.
Scambalory?
Yeah.
Rosenberger?
Here.
Okay, cool. Sims?
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Sandberg?
President accounted for, we have a quorum. Here is a summation of the agenda for the evening. We will hear approval of four sets of minutes from the year 2019. We will go to reports, 20 minutes per period each for council members, the mayor and city offices, including a report on the Rapid Recovery Fund Loan Program, council committees, and members of the public. We will hear appointments to boards and commissions, if any. And then we will go to the following legislation for second readings and resolutions. Ordinance 2026, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation by the City of Bloomington, Indiana, of certain extensions and improvements to the city sewage works utility, the issuance and sale of revenue bonds to provide funds for the payment of the costs thereof, and the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of such sewage works and other related matters. That came from Utilities and Sanitation Committee with a recommendation of due pass 400. Ordinance 2027, to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Wastewater, which also came from the Utilities and Sanitation Committee with a recommendation due pass of 400. Ordinance 2021, to amend Title 12, Street Sidewalks and Storm Sewers, and Title 17, Construction Regulations of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding deleting Chapter 12.08, Excavations, and replacing it with Chapter 12.08, Use of the Right-of-Way, and adding a new Chapter 12.10, Enforcement and Penalties, and deleting three sections of Chapter 12.04, General Regulations, and revising one section of Chapter 17.08, Administration and Enforcement. Transportation Committee Recommendation of Amendment 1 was due pass 400, and the ordinance is amended 400. And finally, Ordinance 2018, to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic, regarding amending Chapters 15.12.010, Stop Intersections, to add several stop signs. 15.12.030, Pedestrian Hybrid Beacon Signals, to add the hybrid beacon signal. 15.32.080, No Parking Zones, to add several no parking zones. 15.32.100, Loading Zones, to delete several loading zones. 15.32.100, Loading Zones, to add a loading zone. 15.37.020, Applicability, to delete several streets from Zone 8. And 15.37.050, Fees, to add provision about the timing of permit sales. The Transportation Committee Recommendation of Amendment 1 to that ordinance was due pass 400, and the recommendation on the ordinance is amended was due pass 400. We'll then go to legislation for first reading, which include Ordinance 2031, to amend Title 2 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel, inserting Chapter 2.35, Establishing the Department of Engineering, and amending Chapter 2.14, titled Planning and Transportation Department, and Appropriation Ordinance 2007, to specially appropriate from the General Fund, Enhanced Access Fund, Solid Waste Fund, Risk Management Fund, and the Rental Inspection Program Fund, expenditures not otherwise appropriated, appropriating various transfers of funds within the Public Safety, Telecommunications Fund, Alternative Transportation Fund, Parky Meter Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, Fleet Maintenance Fund, Police Pension Fund, and appropriating additional funds from the General Fund, Rental Inspection Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and the Risk Management Fund. We will then have a period of additional public comment. We will take up matters of council schedule, and then we will adjourn. Let us start now then with approval of minutes. Madam Parliamentarian?
Yes, I moved at the minutes of October 10th, 2019, and November 6th, 2019, as well as the minutes of December 18th, 2019, be approved as amended.
I'd like a second, but do we?
I left out one set of minutes that I think might need some clarification.
Second.
If a motion is second, is there discussion on these sets of minutes?
Quick question?
Madam Clerk.
I don't think that the minutes from December 18th have been amended or changed since they were sent to you last week. Did you want to include that in a separate motion, or do you just want to leave it as it is?
Well, just to clarify, are you saying that they were amended?
They were not.
Okay, is it just a clarification of her motion?
I'm just asking if...
Yes, allow me to amend my motion, please, Mr. President.
Please.
I move approval of the minutes of October 10th and November 6th as amended from last year, and the minutes of December 18th, 2019, as submitted to begin with.
Second.
If a motion is second on the corrected motion, is there any discussion, other discussion on the new motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on those sets of minutes?
Yes. If you can give me just one second to make sure I've got this down. Councilmember Scambalory?
Yeah.
Rosenberger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Cool.
Thank you, those minutes are approved. Any other motions?
I would move approval of the minutes of December 11th, 2019, but I think there might be an addition or a correction to be made.
Well, we need a motion on the table first, so would you like to make that? Madam, yes, Ms. Sandberg? Are you speaking to the motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay, hold on a second. We had a second, all right, go ahead, please.
I have a motion regarding the proposed minutes of December 11th, 2019, the regular session, and that would be that the statement of the Executive Committee approved by the council during that meeting and the excerpts of the investigative summary, which the statement makes part of that meeting's records, shall be attached to and made part of the minutes of that meeting.
Second.
If motion is second, is there any discussion on the motion? Well, that actually...
Is that an amendment then to the motion?
Is it an amendment to the motion?
I would assume it is an amendment, yes, but I'm moving it for consideration.
Well, I'm... Now I'm confused, because it's basically, it's almost a replacement motion. So are you amending the proposed minutes?
The motion would simply add, as was the will of the council during this meeting, to this particular record before approve these minutes.
Is there discussion of the motion by Councilmember Sandberg to amend the motion, Madam Clerk?
I just, I had a quick question. The statement that the council approved that's referred to in the minutes attaches the statement, it already attaches the statement to the minutes. So do you want to attach the statement again? Or you just...
So you're saying that the minutes that are called for by Councilmember Sandberg's motion are already included in the minutes?
Yeah, they're just not physically attached yet because it's not a normal procedure for attachments. So I'm just trying to clarify.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Is the case, this just merely puts it on the public record in today's meeting that those will be attached to these official minutes for December 11th.
But the minutes already, we're voting on the public record, and the text you're talking about is already in the record we're about to vote on.
I didn't see it when I was reading the minutes today, so I assumed they needed to be amended to attach.
I see.
May want to defer to Councilmember Rallo, who was president at the time. I'm just simply making this a matter of record, it really is not, I don't think...
Mr. Rallo?
Deal.
Do you have any thoughts on this?
No, I just would like to clarify is that I think Councilmember Sandberg's correct that there wasn't an attachment with those two items, which was the Executive Committee Report and the investigative summary. And so this, I believe, just simply directs that those to be attached.
Madam Clerk?
I just wanted to make sure that you don't want two sets of the attachments with the minutes. You just want one, is that what you're saying? I'm just trying to get direction.
I mean, that, does that...
Yes, the...
Okay.
What I understand is that this is... It will be explicit, explicit council action is what the amendment is. But yes, we only want one of each attached to the minutes, if I gather, Councilmember Sandberg.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rallo, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, just a question, I'm not sure actually who it's really directed to or who should answer, but if I understood correctly from Clerk Bolden, the minutes we vote on, including four sets tonight, mention or reference a lot of committee reports, ordinances, resolutions, et cetera. And standard practice, it sounds like, is to attach any of those items, committee reports, resolutions, ordinances, to the minutes, but those aren't typically included in the minutes that we read. They're just referenced, and then it sounds like as a matter of record, they're attached. Is that an accurate understanding? Okay. Okay, thank you. I saw a nod from Clerk Bolden, I took that as an answer.
Okay. Any other questions on the motion by Councilmember Sandberg to amend Councilmember Piedmont Smith's motion? If not, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Okay, Councilmember Rosenberger?
Abstain.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Abstain.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Scambalory?
Yes.
That passes by a motion of a vote of 612. We now come back to the minutes as amended, or the motion as amended by Councilmember Sandberg's motion. Is there any discussion on the minutes of December 11th? Seeing none, I'll direct the clerk to call the roll on the minutes.
Okay, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Abstain.
I'm sorry?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you. Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Did not hear you.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
And Rosenberger?
Abstain.
I believe that's a 702 approval of the minutes of December 11th, 2019. All right, with that, we conclude our approval of minutes. We go now to reports from council members. I'm going to start again with the members I see furthest back on the second screen of my Zoom call, so I'm going to start with Councilmember Rosenberger.
No report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
No report.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith?
No report.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Scambalory?
Thank you, yes, I'd like to extend an invitation to my upcoming constituent meeting, generally held the first Saturdays of each month. The next one is coming up this Saturday, November 7th, 1:30 PM. It's held via Zoom, just out of an abundance of caution during the pandemic. The link is available at supercitycouncil.com. There's a button there that says join, that will allow you to join the meeting. And most of the issues we discuss are understandably focused on our district, District 2, but others are certainly welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg?
Just briefly, the dedication of the Captain Janeway statue along the Beeline Trail was very successful last Saturday. And with all the very critically important things going on, I found this to be an activity that was just a breath of fresh air. It was safely distanced, and everyone was masked, and it's a thing of beauty to behold. So as you're walking along, please take note right behind the wonderlam, and one of those things that I think brings us together in good cheer and good faith, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo.
I have no report, thanks.
Thank you. I'll just want to piggyback on Councilmember Sandberg's comment, and specifically call out Peter and Mary Beth Kazmerick and Lee Lawmaster for helping coordinate the remarkable event that took place and brought a lot of people out and put another marker on the map of the Beeline. Thank you all. We go now to reports from the mayor and city offices. I believe that we are going to be hearing about the Rapid Recovery Fund Loan Program. I'm not sure who's here to present on that, but we are ready for that report. Is that Ms. Cooper Smith? Yes, hello.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen if that's...
If, that's great, if you would also introduce yourself.
Sorry.
No problem, just...
Technical difficulties, yeah. I am Jane Cooper Smith. I'm the Assistant Director for Small Business Development at the City of Bloomington in the Economic and Sustainable Development Department. And you are looking at my Zoom screen. You will find my PowerPoint, oh gosh, you guys, compassion.
It's okay, it's been a long week already.
Let me do something else. Forgive me, I have everything ready, but it's just...
This is where I get out my stock batch of dad jokes.
I thought everyone gets their phones out and checks to see what's happening with Arizona.
Well, that's today, maybe.
You...
You're almost there.
I know, I'm choking, okay, good lord, okay.
Tell the dad jokes, Steve.
It's too late, she's ready.
It's nice to be here, thank you for the opportunity, council members, to talk to you and update you about the Rapid Response Loan Fund, which the city launched in partnership with the Bloomington Urban Enterprise Association on April 9th of this year. The Department of Local Government Finance has allowed the use of food and beverage tax funds by municipalities as part of the governor's executive orders related to COVID. Executive Order 2047 extends again our public, official public health emergency to December 1st. If you remember, I think the original was set to expire July 1st. So we initially thought we were wrapping this program up and going to be coming back to you with little, you know, status updates on how everyone was doing. But here we are, December 1st is the new deadline. And I suspect it will also again roll forward. This is, so along with the deadline, allows our ability to continue operating the loan program. This is of critical importance, as many of our local businesses that stabilized over the summer are experiencing or anticipating decreased revenue over the winter months. This program is an outgrowth of the Mayor's COVID Economic Stabilization and Recovery Working Group. Here is the team roster, which features Councilmember Scambalory, County Councilmember Jeff McKem, along with representatives of the Chamber, Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, CDFI Friendly Bloomington, and city staffers from Economic and Sustainable Development. This list represents the RRF Advisory Committee. These are the 18 generous community partners who spent many weekend and evening hours reviewing and scoring applications. Lon Stevens has been especially gracious with his time and flexibility in evaluating appeals applications. The city, ESNR, and borrowers express their continued thanks to this group of people. Bloomington City Council allocated $2 million of food and beverage tax revenue for the loan fund, and the Bloomington Urban Enterprises Association contributed $350,000. Each pot of money has its own set of restrictions. The food and beverage funds are lendable only to tourism-related businesses, while the BVA funds are restricted to businesses within the enterprise zone. So here I'm sharing with you a map of the enterprise zone, which extends from 17th Street on the north side, and forgive this map, it's ancient, but 17th Street on the north side to Country Club on the south. And then it's faint yellow, but you can sort of see the boundary on the east is walnut with a few sections that jut out. And then it's a little bit more jagged on the west. And it's definitely Adams, and then a little bit farther west in certain spots. So this is to say that borrowers are restricted to, you know, either doing business that supports tourism or operating within this map, but there are a lot of businesses that, you know, don't fit either of those categories. Four applicants did not receive offers because of these restrictions. The current status snapshot looks fairly similar to when we last presented an update. You can see that the, I call it the abandon rate, but it's the, it's the long bar that says pending submission. This is high at 144 applications or 64%. You can see 62 awards were accepted, three were declined, seven were not selected. Three are requests pending, that sort of means that they... These are, two of them fall in this kind of doughnut hole where they're not covered, but we left them there because the applications are good, and if there's some other funding that becomes available, they could be eligible, and then withdrawn is pretty self-explanatory. There are no applicants in submitted, selected for award, additional info requested, or under review, because we do not have any live applications right now. Regarding the abandon rate, anecdotal feedback is that businesses were uncomfortable sharing the amount of detail in the loan application, whether it was with the city directly or reviewers, which, you know, even though the data is confidential, these are all community members that people interact with. Some borrowers ended up getting PPP or idle and didn't need the Rapid Response Fund. The PPP was cheaper to borrow when the forgiveness happens, and then the idle loans have much lengthier repayment schedules. But if you remember, we launched this quickly and anticipated that it would be a bridge fund. Some applicants did not want to pay any interest. This loan fund has a 2% interest rate, and others believe the city should have been offering small business support in the form of grants rather than loans. So we did have a lot of feedback along those lines. We have funded two new loans in the last month, and we have processed two loans for additional amounts, so two completely new borrowers and two borrowers who increased their amounts. We also have feedback that we'll have two more borrowers at the end of this month, which are extant borrowers requesting additional funds. So this slide shows us kind of the breakdown. To date, well, I'll just walk through this. So it shows that we have $2 million allocated from food and beverage, $350,000 from BVA. We've funded a total of 62 loans with nearly $1.5 million from the food and beverage tax fund, nearly $300,000 from the BVA. We have two loans of $50,000 that have been repaid in full, and then 60 loans that are, I mean, outstanding sounds negative, they're just active. So that leaves $583,400 in the food and beverage tax fund, $105,830 in the BVA fund. So you can also see the average loan amount hovers around $28,000. The council and city staff are focused on borrower demographics to, you know, both support equity and monitor our distribution of these funds. Of the 62 organizations, 62 loan organizations who received them were... Six of them, or 9.7%, were black-owned businesses. Five borrowers, or 8.1%, were Asian-owned businesses. Two borrowers, or 3.2%, were folks who marked other because they were not represented by listed options. Three borrowers, or 4.8%, preferred not to identify, report a racial identity. And then 46, or 74.2%, were white-owned businesses. So we improved slightly upon our, like, what census reported as our racial diversity in the 2010 census, but not by much, it's pretty much on par. In terms of ethnicity, the application, I mean, this is pretty self-explanatory, had two options, Hispanic and Latino, or non-Hispanic and Latino. So borrowers were primarily non-Hispanic and Latino. We have 8.1% of borrowers identifying as Hispanic or Latino. In terms of gender... Borrowers represent 30 women-led businesses, businesses, two non-binary or gender queer-led businesses. Two borrowers prefer not to say, one answered both, which I believe means it's a partnership between a man and a woman. And then two, I said that already, two borrowers prefer not to say. And then I didn't make a separate chart for it, but we captured some additional data. One business owner identified as disabled. One owner identified as an immigrant and another as a veteran. But I will say that I think because we fired the application off so quickly, we could have done a more nuanced job capturing this data, and I wish we had, because we don't really allow for intersectionality within the way the demographics are reported. So, so I think were we to do it again, it would be improved. And then finally, I feel like some of the most important information I can share are testimonials that I've received from borrowers of the Rapid Response Loan Fund. Like, general feedback is that businesses stabilized over the summer as consumer confidence increased alongside mask mandate, increased availability of testing, and better information about COVID transmission and prevention. Additionally, businesses offered alternatives with the support of the city to traditional models with outdoor dining via street closures and parklets. And of course, that's with the support of council as well, which we're grateful for. However, going into the winter, businesses are very concerned about decreased revenue and the potential of new shutdowns. Entertainment venues report a unique challenge, given that their business models rely on large gatherings and booking and paying for artists in advance. So the risk is that they're laying down a percentage for acts that are not, you know, maybe there will be a shutdown, or someone will get sick, or a staff member will be sick and the bar will have to shut down, so there's just increased risk there. And then, of course, restaurants also face a particular challenge in that diners have not yet returned indoors, you know, en masse, while the weather grows cold. They've had some success with outdoor dining, but obviously that will become more challenging as the weather advances. Generally speaking, borrowers are grateful for the support of the Rapid Response Loan Fund. Some have even been able to use the funds for growth rather than just stabilization, so acquiring equipment, shifts in business models that are not just kind of defensive moves, but, you know, really thinking about strategic growth. So that feels really important to me. I have cited a couple of borrower testimonials on the slide, but to read in a little more detail, if I have the time. Byhand Gallery manager Suzanne Halverson says, "If we had not received a PPP grant," and it's a loan, "in the City of Bloomington's Emergency Relief Loan, we would not have been able to survive the pandemic shutdown and subsequent slowdown in customer traffic. After being a business in downtown Bloomington for 41 years, it would be tragic to have to close our doors because of this public health threat. We are doing everything we possibly can, such as raising our monthly membership dues to keep going." That's the rub. Jim Kleppinger states, "That's the rub, has been open at about 35 to 40% capacity since June. It's been tough, but we are continuing operations and scraping by. Our hope is that repayment will be delayed until all of this is behind us. As with winter coming up, we are expecting..." As with winter coming up, we are expecting another shutdown. That said, we remain optimistic and are expecting reasonable progression until people are more willing to venture out." In Bloom, which is a juicerie located on Walnut Street, JR Ricker states, "The original RRF loan helped us get through slower months when students were gone to continue paying our employees. We're in a healthy place financially, excuse me, to continue paying our employees through what will inevitably be a slower winter, and we're still progressing forward with the future of In Bloom. Rather than staying content with where we are, we are planning on making some big changes this winter to purchase new equipment and start a new menu that includes a fully online experience for customers. This is where we hope to direct the additional loan amount from the RRF." Razors Image, "This loan has literally saved our business during the stay-at-home orders and through the reopening phase. There would have been no way we could have survived without the support. Looking ahead, we are, we are able to budget for the repayment of the loan, but are nervous regarding the general operating cost of business through the pandemic." She goes on to describe how COVID restrictions have limited their ability to grow, which I think is really important. And then, if you'll bear with me, the last testimonial was really moving from Miranda Shipley-Bush of B-Town Diner. She sent a long email, which I'll be happy to forward, describing the process of taking over B-Town Diner a year ago, operating on very slim margins and then having COVID hit. She describes frantically checking for the SBA loan application to go live to apply for B-Town Diner, which she purchased in 2019, and as a result, had left her business very cash poor. She says, "When it finally opened up for us, I quickly went through it and got it sent with all the documentation. While the long wait time began, I was concerned about a particular question." This is the PPP application. "I was concerned about a particular question on the application. It questioned along the lines of, have you ever or are you currently involved in the criminal justice system for a felony crime? I found this question to be unfair to myself and many business owners across the country and worried about it every single day. Why? Because I have been incarcerated for a felony. I have made my rounds in courtrooms over the years, but I changed my life over five years ago. I worked hard to overcome negative behaviors learned from childhood, the poor decision-making I had through my twenties and the addiction I suffered with for too many years of my life. I am a concerned and valid community member like anyone else. I volunteer with stepping stones, halfway houses, I mentor struggling addicts. I've advocated for grant funding for programs geared toward helping newly released inmates in gaining independence. I hire recovering people who need work, sit on the parent council at Head Start, and I remain vigilant in helping youth who've been through similar trauma. I find it absolutely disturbing that people with a criminal past," which she capitalizes, "would be lumped with all violent, sexual or current aspects of denying this demographic. I had a feeling that this question would be the reason we closed for good. And if it were not for my city, Bloomington, we would have, with literally just two days left on the food and beverage tax loan applications being accepted, because this was in late June. My daughter's teacher sent me a link to the article about it. I moved quickly to get ours and," then she says nice things about me helping her, which I won't repeat. "When I say we wouldn't be here today without the city, that is unequivocally true. The whole diner family gives me, gives thanks and appreciation for your moving quick to help the small businesses here in our home. With your help, we were able to give the staff at least some hours to do other jobs besides cooking and serving. We banded together to refresh the front of house, cut up taxes and bills, and tried to get takeout and delivery started. Being months away from that time, we still have hope for a turnaround. To be honest, we are still suffering. We have been very smart with the loan money, and while we have revenue, it is still not enough to sustain the business. The money left in the bank is helping us get through this time by supplementing the monies coming in for bills. I know this won't work forever, but right now it is all we have. I am cautiously hopeful that we will be back to normal while understanding the reality of our times. If we do survive this terrible blow, please understand it is only because we were supported by Bloomington." Thank you so much for your patience in my getting started, and I'd be happy to take questions.
Thank you for that report.
Yeah.
With, with that, are there any questions or comments for it from council members? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you very much for the update on this very important fund and for your work in, in getting the money out the door and helping businesses. I had a question about the remaining funds. So we have more than half a million dollars of the allocated two million in food and beverage tax money remaining. Is there another round of applications pending? Or what are the plans for that remaining money?
Our, I continue to talk to business owners about it. When meeting with the Chamber of Commerce last week, we let them know that it was still, you know, alive program and that, you know, people could borrow. So we're working to get the funds out there and are considering it active. And the BUA also has a hundred and five thousand, I think, left. And the way that they described their fund was that it's tied to the lifespan of the food and beverage tax fund. So they're both alive and well, and I just think we should get it out the door. We have two applications coming in this month, and I think we will see more without a doubt, just given the winter pressures on business.
So you currently have kind of a rolling deadline? Or is there a set deadline for a new?
Yeah, so the deadline is tied to the executive orders. And because the executive orders go month by month, we, we can't technically promise that the fund will be available beyond December first.
But currently it's open to applications?
Yes.
Good to know and good to publicize.
Yes.
Thank you.
Further questions from members or comments? Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper Smith. I was particularly moved by the testimonials. I think it's very important as we share the data and the numbers that we're also putting the human face on these business owners and how much they are struggling still, even in the face of this, this very important recovery dollars. A question is, do you have any idea if any other relief is coming from outside of the city of Bloomington with respect to federal funding? Any, any updates on that? I know the country has been a little distracted lately, but I'm hopeful that Congress will get back to the people's business very soon.
Yeah. Well, we were kind of waiting with bated breath, like everyone else, to see what would happen with the additional cares, potential third round of care funding. But in the meantime, we have, the state of Indiana has a twenty thousand dollar grant program, twenty thousand dollar per company grant program that allows operating expenses to be covered. So that seems really essential, and I've been trying to promote that as much as possible. And then our county cares funding is still very much allowed. Those funds are grant funds that will cover PPE and adjustments to a company's business model. So any changes that they have to make that are COVID-related can get submitted to the county, and then standing expenses can go up to the state.
Right, well, thank you very much for everything. You've done a great job.
Oh, thank you.
Further questions or comments? Councilmember Sims.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper Smith. I appreciate the report. And thank you and everyone that's involved in taking care of this. I have a question having to do with the loan application, the felony question or felony conviction question. If that is a yes, does that disqualify the applicant? It doesn't sound like it with your report, but, and I guess, and I guess I'm asking that if it doesn't, then why is that even on the application?
It's, it's not on there, and I knew I was reading too quickly, but I didn't want to take all night with that testimonial either. But so what that applicant was saying was that they applied for federal funding, and then they hit the felony question and didn't get that funding. Then they were notified that the city had the funding available and went through the application process. And there is no, no question on our application about a felony conviction. And so that's what she was expressing her gratitude for, and I think really feeling supported by the city slash BUA program, which honestly, that letter was moved me to tears this afternoon when I read it.
Okay, thank you. The next question, I think, is, and maybe I missed this in your presentation, but what percentage of the total applicants couldn't be helped due to ineligibility or other reasons? I'm sure there were some businesses that applied that weren't in the tourism business, for an example, or in the tourism industry.
Right, so that was, I'm going back to my, to make sure I say the right thing, but there were seven businesses total who were not selected. And of those businesses, four were kind of in the doughnut, where they didn't fit the, they didn't fit the profile. They were neither tourism nor located in the enterprise zone. And then the others were, were rejected because it usually, it wouldn't, it wouldn't even be debt-to-income ratio. It would just be that they, they weren't generating any, any revenue at all. And so it was, and I wasn't making these decisions, I'm recounting notes. But it was that they couldn't, they couldn't sustain a payment if they didn't have any monthly revenue.
Okay, do you have an approximate percentage of that? You said seven, just ballpark, just.
Of the total applicants, so there were.
Yeah, just so I have an understanding, so.
Yeah. It's about three percent.
Okay.
So I think there were two hundred and twenty-four applicants total, but I would have to check that number, but it would be in that ballpark.
Okay. Two hundred and twenty-four and seven were ineligible or rejected. Okay, thank you. And lastly, if I may, on the borrower demographics, in particular with race and gender, and there was a couple of people that opted not to say or prefer not to say. Now, part of your presentation, you said, moving forward, you would revamp the application. Would this be part of, of the revamping of the application? And could you speak on that just for a second?
So I think the, the accurate, the thing I was trying to say was, if I were doing this program all over again and had the time to be more thoughtful about that, I would collect the demographic data in a way that allowed layers because right now it's really hard to tell if someone is a woman-owned business, minority-owned business, and also a veteran-owned business, for example. So we are not planning to retool the application because we want to have an apples-to-apples comparison going forward. But I would be happy to pull that thread. I mean, if it seems like the better answer is to have really tight categories going forward, it's definitely something that can be done. I was just kind of prioritizing having, yeah, apples-to-apples.
Okay, thank you. No, I was thinking more in terms of thoroughness with data collection as moving forward. So that was kind of what I was leaning toward. So thank you very much for your answers. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scamblury.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper Smith. Thank you. And thank you to staff for the amazing work you've done in this. I think we're going to look back in a year and five years and ten years and think about what this has accomplished during this time, so bravo. You mentioned that two loans had been repaid, I think it was two fifty thousand dollar loans. And if I'm remembering correctly, the loans repaid within twelve months, the interest is forgiven for those loans. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Has, I, I'm just gonna lob this out there, and I don't expect an answer tonight, but has any, has there been much discussion? Has there been any discussion on what it would take to make these loans interest-free? And what might that mean? Depending on how long the pandemic persists and how long our businesses are affected, that interest might bring a burden that dissuades people from, from applying.
Right, yeah. And it, it clearly has. We did, we have received that feedback. So I asked the higher-ups in our organization what that would entail. And it, the information I received was that the mayor, legal department, and controller's office would have to sign off and possibly the Food and Beverage Commission, since it would be changing the program from what, what was presented. And then I think there's some question of whether council would have to make any statements. But I don't think that you would have to offer a resolution because you didn't weigh in on the terms of the program. You just agreed to the allocation of the funding. So it seems like there would be some steps to take. I was thinking about this today and thinking about the expenses, expenses related to the program. So going forward, expenses will be in the loan servicing. We're going to hire a third-party nonprofit servicer. I believe the expense is about twenty dollars per loan annually. And then there's a startup cost that's pretty nominal. And then these are two-year loan terms. So the cost isn't enormous there. And the BUA will be covering its loans with that, those servicing fees. And then the other cost is just the staff time that's been involved. So I think that is a good conversation to have. And if the ESNR Working Group or the council wishes for us to, you know, investigate that, I'm happy to do so.
I, I think it's an interesting question to bring up. I, I know that some have said, please just make them into grants. And some have said, please, go ahead and make them loans, but make them interest-free. So there's kind of a continuum here. And if we could explore some options that place a less of a burden on our, our local employers, I think that's a worthwhile conversation. So good for thought. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
President Volan, we cannot hear you.
I'm muted, my bad. Is there any other questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I wanted to ask about the BUA funds. Are those loans as well, or are they grants?
These, the three hundred and fifty thousand are loans. And then they have beefed up their annual granting budget. So they added, I think, a hundred and twelve thousand for arts grants this year, and then up from their regular forty thousand in arts grants. And then they increased the budget line of economic enhancement scholarships, which is a twelve hundred dollar lifetime scholarship that can be used for training, conference attendance, which of course is nil right now, professional association dues. So it's pretty specific, but it's there, and that budget line is now at thirty-two thousand dollars. So they, they've really, you know, I, I feel like they've really stepped up during COVID to try to support their organizations.
And is the, the income coming into the BUA, is that, has that been affected by COVID?
Not as yet, because it is tied to real property and personal property values, which don't, don't change this quickly. Yeah, I don't know if that's a good enough answer. It's a tax deduction program, and they receive a percentage of the total tax savings from each organization. So I suppose we could see next year, although the BUA is expecting a decrease in revenue anyway just because so many of the participating organizations' leases are expiring, so.
Yeah, I'd just forgotten the, the revenue basis for it, so thank you.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll just say, Ms. Cooper Smith, thanks for a great report. It's really good to see that, that program was effective and useful and helped the community. The story, the last story you told really was very moving. And thank you for the work that you were doing to keep the city going.
Thank you. It's, yeah.
All right.
Appreciate the time. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other reports from the mayor and city offices? Seeing none, we'll go to council committees. Are there any council committee reports and items on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to reports from members of the public. This is a time where members of the public may address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you would like to speak to the council, you'll have five minutes. Please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat. And I'm not sure who's doing the recognizing tonight, whether it's Mr. Lucas or Clerk Bolden, but somebody will acknowledge you. Do we have any public comments? Can please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat? Going once. Second call for public comment. Seeing no request for public comment, we'll go on to appointments to boards and commissions. Are there any to be had tonight? Seeing none, we'll go to legislation for second readings and resolutions. Madam Parliamentarian?
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 20-26 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to introduce?
Yes. Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Inmont Smith?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scamblury?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes.
That motion is approved. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Yes, Amendment 2026, An Ordinance Authorizing the Acquisition, Construction, and Installation by the City of Bloomington, Indiana of Certain Extensions and Improvements to the City Sewer Works Utility, Issuance and Sale of Revenue Bonds to Provide Funds for the Payment of the Costs Thereof and the Collection, Segregation, and Distribution of the Revenues of Such Sewer Works and Other Related Matters. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Bloomington to issue its sewage works revenue bonds of 2020 in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $32 million. The 2020 bonds will be issued to finance the first phase of modernizing the Dillman Road WWTP, the replacement of the existing storm culvert system of the Jordan Culvert, and pay costs of issuance of the bonds. Your Utilities and Sanitation Committee recommendation is due pass 400.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2026 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, that item is on the table now. Who is here to present?
I am.
Okay, Mr. Kelson, and I just want to point out that after your presentation, we'll also hear a report from the Utilities and Sanitation Committee. Please go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, I'm sharing my screen. I hope you can all see it.
And he's on top of it. Okay, good.
Good evening. I'm Vic Kelson, Director of the Utilities Department. I'm happy to be here tonight to discuss ordinance 2026, which is bonding for major improvements to our sewer and stormwater infrastructure. Background, first of all, CBU wishes to sell bonds totaling $30.4 million. They'll pay for two major capital projects. The first is modernization and capacity improvements at the Dillman Road wastewater treatment plant. And the other is replacement of major storm sewer infrastructure in downtown Bloomington. Just for description, the sewer works portion of the project, I.D.M. warned us in 2016 that we exceeded the capacity of the Dillman plant, exceeded 90% of the capacity of the Dillman plant for three consecutive years. And we were directed to begin planning and implementation of capacity improvements. Since then, we've been working with I.D.M. and our engineers to modernize the electrical systems, controls, and blowers, and install additional filters at Dillman. This is the first phase of raising our capacity from 15 million gallons per day to 20 million gallons per day. The second phase will be improvement store digestors. This $23 million project is in progress. So far, we've been paying the expenses from cash on hand, bond proceeds, and current revenues will pay for the remainder of the project. In 2019, this was funded already by the council as part of our sewer rate increase. So the, the, this project will have no impact on sewer rates. I will point out, this project also has an important environmental component in that the new blower systems are much more efficient electrically and they have highly improved controls that will help to reduce the amount of electricity that we use for aeration at the plant. Stormwater portion of the project, it will be the completion of the so-called Jordan River Tunnel. The upstream and downstream portions that are shown on blue on this map were replaced 15 or 20 years ago. The tunnel is nearly 100 years old or thereabouts on its integrated condition. Also, with all the building that's happened in the basin over the years, there's a lot more impervious surface. So we get larger rainfall, start larger flow during major rain events. With the onset of climate change, we expect that to continue to increase. We had to do an emergency repair of the roof of the tunnel at Third and Lincoln a couple of years ago. And so it's time for us to finish this middle portion of the project. Altogether, this project will cost about 11 or 12 million dollars. And again, in 2018, council authorized an increase in the stormwater fee that will fund this project. So this project will not cause any impact on the amount of the stormwater fee. The reason these are included together is that organizationally, our stormwater budget is included within our sewer budget. I have with me Laura Pettit, CBU's Assistant Director for Finance, and Buzz Crone, who will talk to you now about the financial details of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Kelson. For the record, my name is Buzz Crone, with OW Crone and Associates CPAs and SEC Registered Municipal Advisors. First, give you a little brief summary of the project costs and funding mix. We might as well go right to that slide, Vic. Thank you. As Mr. Kelson indicated, the, the bond, the bonds are not to exceed 32 million. We're estimating 30.4 million at this point. And but, and the total project, I believe, has a cap of 40 million. We're estimating 38.4 million. The difference coming from funds that have been accumulated over the years from some of the, it was factored into the rate adjustments from a year or two ago, as well as your connection fees that you've been accumulating through system development charges and new development. So that new development is contributing, you know, considerable amount to this, this project. Again, the breakdown of the costs, a little over two thirds of it relates to the Dillman Road project or the wastewater treatment plant, and then about a little less than a third to the Jordan River Culvert. Let's go ahead to the next slide. This is a illustration of the proposed amortization schedule of the 30.4 million. We, you'll notice that in the early years, we're just paying interest. We're doing that so that to keep a total level debt service, you've got several other bonds outstanding that pay off at different points in time. And our goal was to keep the debt service, the total debt service, as level as possible. But this shows you an illustration of about a 20-year, 21-year amortization of, of the proposed bonds. And on this next slide, we have, we combine them. So you can see in the far right-hand column, our maximum debt requirement would be actually next year, about 5.2 million. That actually happens before we start making payments on the new bonds. And as we have bonds dropping off at different points in time, those payments on the 2020 bonds will accelerate. And again, if, if we were to assume no further bond issues by the Bloomington Wastewater Utility, you'd see a gradual declining of that annual debt, debt service payment. More than likely, there will be more projects that will come up down the road. But that's our goal here, is to keep the, the, the overall debt level. And that way, providing the most amount of what we call debt service coverage that helps with our bond ratings and so forth. And I believe the next schedule has a three-year projection of what we think that debt coverage rate ratios will be. As, as I believe Mr. Kelson indicated, that these, we did approve rate increases that have been phased in, starting in 2019. And our test year for 2019, our, our operating revenues were about $20.5 million. The rate increases or the rate adjustments for the across-the-board increase that has already been implemented now, as well as the outside city surcharge. We include the stormwater fees in the overall revenue and revenue requirements so that we have, it, it helps both sides of the, the stormwater and the wastewater. Whenever you have bonds issued for either project or, even though some of that stormwater, some of this wastewater, it's sort of the same overall, keeping the streams clean. And it, it, again, it helps our, our debt coverage picture. As you'll see, sort of the last row of the, the slides there, you'll see our debt coverage ratios are projected to be a little over two to one, 209%, 213%, 206%. Those are strong coverage ratios. We're pretty confident that we'll maintain our A-plus bond rating. We have a ratings call with Standard and Poor's set up for, I think, next Thursday. They already have our preliminary official statement in hand. And we'll be watching the market after, once the election is settled or not settled. We'll be seeing what impact that has on market conditions. But Laura and Jeff want us to be ready to move quickly to take advantage of good times in the market. And we would estimate that sometime between the latter part of November and the latter part of January will be the timing at which we'll, we'll pull the trigger and actually have a bond sale. So stay tuned. We'll get back with you on those results as, as they come in. With that, I would entertain any questions or comments from, from the council?
Thank you, Mr. Crone. If you'd unshare the screen, I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
Before we go to questions, let's hear the committee report. I believe that's Councilwoman Barello.
Pardon me? The committee, the Utilities and Sanitation Committee met last Wednesday, October 28th. We reviewed this for about 30 minutes. That is the issuance of the bonds for these two projects. The Dillman Road wastewater treatment plant, improvements and expansion in the Jordan River Culvert project. And the sentiment of the committee members was that these were both important projects and necessary projects. And the members were favorable unanimously with a 4-0 vote on ordinance 2026.
Thank you. With that, I'll take questions from members on ordinance 2026. Going once. Going twice. Councilwoman Barello?
Yes, I asked this question during our committee meeting, but I thought it would be worthwhile for the whole group to hear. And that is, Mr. Kelson, could you tell us regarding the expansion of the, the Dillman Road wastewater plant, about how many years does that provide us in terms of anticipating increased population?
At our current reading growth, that's about 15 years or so. Okay. So we have, we have projected that off into the future. So, you know, 2035 or thereafter is when we would anticipate needing to go to the next step.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Puppin Smith?
Yeah, I had a question about something in the ordinance, section 20, item E, says the city shall take all action or proceedings necessary and proper, to the extent permitted by law, to require connection of all property where liquid and solid waste, sewage, night soil, or industrial waste is produced with available sanitary sewers. The city shall, insofar as possible and to the extent permitted by law, cause all such sanitary sewers to be connected with said sewage works. Can somebody unpack that for me and say, you know, what does that mean? I mean, it sounds like we're, you know, we are required to go out and make sure people hook up to our sewer system.
Well, there's, there's two things, there's two things, and Buzz, you may want to pitch in on this too. But there's two issues here. One is that we're not going to let somebody build a new sanitary sewer system in the middle of our coverage area. That if somebody, if there's going to be more, more sewer connections, they're going to go to Dillman Road. We're not going to go, let somebody build another utility. That's, that's part of it. The other part of it is if you build a, a new property and the, you're within 300 feet of a sewer, you have to connect to it. You can't do a septic tank. So we can't allow people to build new homes with septic tanks that are close enough to sewers that they could be, be required to connect. Similarly, if the, if your property is within 300 feet of the, of a sewer line and you need, for some reason, your septic tank has to be abandoned, you can't build another septic tank, but the, the Monro County Health Department will require you to connect to our sanitary system. Is there anything I'm leaving out, Laura or Buzz?
No, I think, I think you covered it very well. It's a federal state law that if you're within that 300 feet of a sewer line, that, you know, you can be compelled to connect. Now, most places, if they have a, a working septic system, they may let that slide until such time as that septic system fails, just as you described.
So that, it's really just enforcing our current regulations.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions from members? Second call? All right, we'll go now to members of the public. If there's a member of the public who'd like to speak to ordinance 2026, please raise your hand, use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat. You'll be recognized. First call for public comment on ordinance 2026. Second call for public comment. Final call for public comment on ordinance 2026. Seeing no public comment, we'll go back to the council for debate. Is there any final comment on ordinance 2026? Last call. Seeing none, we'll go for a vote on ordinance 2026. Will the clerk please call the roll?
All right. Yes. I think I'm starting on Councilmember Puppin Smith.
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scamblury?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
And Volan?
Yes. And I believe that ordinance passes 9-0. We go now to the next ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 20-27.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 20-27 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the role of the motion to introduce?
Yes, Councilmember. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Borello?
Yes.
Scamblury?
Yeah.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
And P. Mont Smith?
Okay. It seems like the motion carries. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Ordinance 2027 to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled wastewater. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends the Bloomington Municipal Code Title 10 at Chapter 17 to expand the types of fats, oils, and grease fog devices acceptable to CBU and its fog program in an effort to reduce the overall economic impact to the food service industry for complying with the fog program while increasing cooperation in the fog program. These amendments also establish a new permit program which requires all fog hauling services to first apply for and receive a permit from CBU for engaging in any hauling of fog waste in the city. The permit program is free and contains an educational component to educate the fog hauling industry on best practices for cleaning and maintaining fog retention devices, as well as best practices for hauling and disposing of fog waste. This program is intended to increase the effectiveness of fog retention device maintenance, which will in turn increase the effectiveness of the fog retention device in keeping fog waste material from entering the wastewater collection system. The Utilities and Sanitation Committee recommendation was due pass four zero zero.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2027 be adopted.
Second.
For motion a second, who is here to present on ordinance 2027?
It's, it's me again. I'm Vic Kelson. Yeah, I'm Vic Kelson, Utilities Director. Thank you for hearing us tonight on this item. This, with me, I have James Hall, who is our Assistant Director for Environmental Programs, and Jason Winning, who is our Industrial Pretreatment Coordinator. As the synopsis said, fat soils and grease are bad news in sanitary sewers. They can, those materials can accumulate inside sewer mains. They can lead to those sewers being plugged. That can lead to overflows in certain circumstances when a sewer becomes badly blocked, especially after a rain event. This picture, incidentally, is not of one of our sewers, but it's just a graphic picture of what the grease can look like. Also, when grease gets to the plant, it can cause balls of floating grease to form that can clog things up pretty badly.
Hang on a second, Mr. Kelson. Councilor Scamblury?
Mr. Kelson, are you screen sharing?
I don't think we're, yeah, I was going to say the same thing. Can you start over the shared screen?
God, my technology let me down.
Go on, please.
Okay, fat soils and grease, they can cause major problems inside of the sanitary sewers. And as you see here, this is not a picture of one of our sewers, but there's a lot of grease in this one. It can also, when it gets to the plant, can clog things up. You can get globs of floating grease in the treatment plant that can really mess things up. As a result of these constraints, especially when you're considering the possibility that a sewer can clog, which would lead to the, the release of sanitary sewage into the, into the environment. It's very important for us to control this. And we do clean sewers pretty frequently. In the past, we cleaned them more often than we do downtown because that's where the fog ordinance has been most, most successful. Our fog program regulates over 600 food service establishments in Bloomington. And essentially, it requires grease retention and grease removal. We approve, we approve a number of different devices. There come in two categories broadly speaking. One is a grease trap, which is inside of the food service establishment. Those have to be cleaned every 30 days and have the grease removed pumped out. We also have grease interceptors for larger flows. Those grease interceptors are more expensive and they're much larger. And they have to be placed in the ground, which means that they're pretty expensive for, for FSCs to, to install. This has been a concern of the, of the restaurant businesses in Bloomington for a long time. We have conducted a number of investigations to look at how we can make this program better. And we had the good fortune to have a, a food service company that works nationwide talk to us about using a new device that they have been using elsewhere in the country with great success. So they asked if we would be willing to allow them to install one and evaluate its performance. What we did was, we allowed them to put it in. The requirement was that if it, if it didn't perform, we would treat it as a grease trap when we were done. Because grease interceptors only have to be cleaned every 90 days. So after the year study, we also compared, during the study, we compared the other devices that we've been approving, which are constructed from concrete. You see here, you have to dig a pretty big hole to put one of these in. This is one of the new ones that are much smaller than the, than the old, than the concrete ones. Altogether, we estimate it will save a food service establishment about $3,000 to $5,000 to be able to install one of these smaller, more lightweight devices. We also anticipate that the polymer material that they're made from will last longer in the service than the concrete ones do. The other change that we're asking to make besides allowing these new devices is to establish a preferred pumper program. This will, as, as the synopsis said, require that anybody who is going to be pumping and disposing of grease waste at the Dillon Road Plant, which is the only place we'll take grease, will have to go through a free training program about the best practices and best management practices and how we work. The objectives here are to make sure that the grease is properly handled. It also allows the regulated community to understand that we've taken steps to make sure that they'll get the same service, regardless of which hauler they call. So I would, I can stop here and we would all welcome any questions that you have.
Very good. Thanks, Mr. Kelson. If you could unshare a screen now, that'd be great. Okay, are there questions from, well, actually, first, let's hear the committee report from Utilities and Sanitation on ordinance 2027. Councilor Borello?
Yes, the Utilities and Sanitation Committee met that same date, October 28th. And we reviewed this program and the, the new device. And had a very favorable impression of both. We commended Mr. Kelson's staff for testing these new technologies and, and working with the affected parties to try to make it easier for, for them. Because it, you know, I'm sure they, those parties have found it onerous to some degree. So the committee voted four zero to adopt, sorry to give it due pass recommendation for ordinance 2027.
Very good. Thank you. With that, we'll take questions from council members. First call for questions?
I have one.
Oh, Councilor P. Mont Smith, go ahead.
Um, just for a layperson, how much money are we talking about to install one of these new grease interceptors compared to the old ones?
James, can, can you help with that, James?
Yeah, so estimates between 12 and 15 for the new type and 15,000 to 20,000 for the old concrete. And again, that depends on how much rock you potentially have to bust through.
Thank you.
Further questions from members? I do have a question. Can we, can you help us understand a little bit more why these interceptors are better? I understand they're smaller and cheaper, but can, can you go into some more detail about the old way versus the new way?
Leave that for James and Jason, I think.
Okay, I'll give it a shot. The old concrete interceptors relied on gravity, and that's why they're so large. They just, the time detention to hope that the grease would settle or have time to stay on top of the water while the other went out. These new plastic are engineered. They have baffles and other devices inside and the way that the water comes in, and it helps get the grease to the top of the water so it stays within the device faster. So there, there's just engineering going on in the concrete. Just use detention time basically to let the grease settle to the top.
So you're saying that their advantage is both in size and in performance?
Correct, for the size of them, correct. Yes.
In other words, they're smaller, so they're less expensive to install? And they do a better job than gravity based interceptors?
That's what our pilot studies has found, and that's, the industry is, is showing in studies.
Is there anyone in Bloomington or in the CBU district that has one of these and is using them?
Yes, we have. Sorry, I had that a minute ago. I think we have 11 sites now that we've kind of approved these for on a conditional basis.
Any sense of how they're performing?
The only one we've done studies was the first one. And they are performing just as well, if not better.
And again, the price, the cost is about, what, 30% less than the old way? Is that about right?
Somewhere in there, yeah.
Sounds like a win across the board. Very good. Thank you.
A lot of, yeah, a lot of the cost is the, is the price of the hole. Digging a large, one of the large interceptors, you need a hole that's 10 feet by 10 feet and then deep enough to get the whole thing down to the proper depth. In Bloomington, that may mean you've got to break a lot of rock. Which, which makes the hole probably more expensive than the device that you're putting in.
There are some jokes to be had there. Thank you. Yeah. So how about, how about the new interceptor?
The new ones will take a hole that's, I think, six feet by six feet. And they're also polymer based, so they can, they're much lighter. You don't have to, you know, people can move them around to install them. And I think there's a few places where it may be possible for them even to be installed in basements. Because you can, if you can get, get them into the basement into a proper configuration, then you wouldn't even have to dig a hole.
I guess I'm a little surprised that they aren't less expensive still than, than what they already are. I mean, it sounds like a, just all across the board. If the, the digging of the hole is the biggest expense, how come it's only about 30% less?
Because the hole is about 30% smaller.
And one other thing is they're fairly new to the market. And so there's less manufacturers of them currently. Just in the time that we started the study, we've, I think, been in contact with four or five other manufacturers of these types of devices. So there was maybe one or two players in the market at the time. And now that's growing. So they should be able to see the price drop as more manufacturers get into the, into the market.
Good to know. The last question I have would be, is there any need for existing businesses to retrofit? Or are they, is a gravity based one adequate?
We're still allowing the ones that we've been allowing. We're just adding these as allowable. The, what leads a company to need to have a grease interceptor when it doesn't is there are a number of provisions in the code that trigger it. For example, replumbing your restaurant leads, leads you down, leads you into this program. And it's all, it's all handled through plan review at that point.
Well, if you were replumbing and you had to redo your interceptors, that mean you'd actually have to replace it with a plastic one? Or you could leave the big one that you had in place?
If it's in good condition, you can keep the old one.
Very good. Thank you. Councilor Sims?
Thank you. Need to unmute myself. Thank you, Mr. Kelson. With regard to the grease pumper hauler contractors, I'm confirming that it is mandatory that they dump their grease collections at Dillon.
That's the only place we take grease. And we only take grease from inside Monroe County.
Correct. But a contractor could not take it out of the county? Or could they?
We don't regulate where they take it.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I guess, and I, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Yeah, Jason Winning here, Pretreatment Coordinator. Yeah, we do have some, there are some national based haulers. So we do have a lot of chains, things like that, that are serviced by haulers that come out of Indianapolis. They collect the grease and then they take it back out of county. So we do have a couple haulers who do take waste out of county when it's collected here.
Okay, and I was going to ask about the significance of them using Dillon to dispose of this product from the compliance standpoint, as well as an environmental impact standpoint. Could you speak on that? How do we regulate when people are timely cleaning their grease interceptors? And secondly, what are the potential environmental impacts that minimizes our carbon use and that sort of thing out at the plant?
Well, with grease, the way we handle grease at the plant is it's actually discharged into a lagoon where, where it is oxidized in the sun. So we're really not doing anything with the grease at this point. As far as the, the other part of the question, we have inspection programs for everyone who's covered by the fog program. So our, we have an inspector who's responsible for that. They're also responsible, the regulated community is also responsible for submitting proper records of all the times that they have the devices cleaned and those kinds of things. James may, or Jason may want to add some things.
No, that, that's correct. We, we use a software to help us track all that.
And I won't prolong it, but I was trying to pull out of you the, the digesters, potential future use in anaerobic digesters with our grease collections. If that's something that's timely and willing to, to discuss. And, and next time, don't make me have to pull so hard, please. No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just joking. Thank you very much.
If we do do an analytic, an anaerobic digester project in the future, grease is certainly one of the most beneficial precursors, substances for us to be able to treat in an anaerobic digester. And in fact, we, we had some conversations about, about that concept today about, you know, how, how big a market would there be for our services if we actually had an anaerobic digester?
Hey, thank you. I just think that's important for our community members, the public at large and in general, for future impacts, which I think is positive. So thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Borello?
Yeah, apart from using the grease as a feedstock for an anaerobic digester, Mr. Kelson, you described the amount of grease that you receive as, it's quite enormous, isn't it? Could you?
Off the top of my head, James and Jason know that one.
And Jason, can you correct me? Is it, it's either 30,000 pounds or 30,000 gallons that we receive? It's probably gallons because we measure this.
Yeah, that's correct. It's, it's around 30,000 gallons a month, depending on, you know, how many we have due to be pumped that month. But we average around that.
So apart from the digester, which would be a good idea, another, maybe another thing to consider is using this as a, as a precursor to diesel fuel for Bloomington Transit. Because I know that this type of grease can be converted. Has that been explored and is that something maybe worth doing? Because it just seems like a Because it just seems like a tremendous amount of material and embedded energy in that.
We actually spoke about that today as well. Some of that 30,000 gallons is water that travels with the grease too. So, but yeah, we actually discussed looking into that just this morning.
Oh, good. So you, you'll get back with us about that potential? Terrific, thanks.
Further questions from council members before we go to public comment? Second call. All right, seeing none, we're going to go to public comment. Does member of the public would like to speak on ordinance 2027? They can please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat, and Mr. Lucas will call on you. Are there any takers, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, I did receive a request to have a comment read from Dave Askins, who I don't believe is able to enable his own audio. And if you'll give me a moment, I will pull that up and read that now. Mr. Askin says that the councils, that the council tonight has demonstrated that it's keen to apply rigor to its record-keeping by making sure that a specific exec accompany a set of one-year-old meeting minutes. My question tonight, why isn't the same rigor applied to the requirements of local law, which demand that a fiscal impact statement using a specific form accompany every piece of legislation that appears on tonight's agenda, including this one? I've heard administration committee members at a public meeting claim that it doesn't matter if a fiscal impact statement isn't provided because city council members can ask for information if they want it, and that the information that would go on the form that's required is publicly accessible. As a point of information, if I send the city a simple email with a request under Indiana's Access to Public Records Act, I get the, the response I get is, sorry, Dave, you have to put this on our special records request form before we'll consider it. So what would you suggest I do to get a copy of the fiscal impact statements using the required forms that are supposed to accompany tonight's legislation? It doesn't seem like it should be so hard to follow a simple law, which seems to, which seems designed specifically to make it just a smidgen easier for the public to understand how their money is getting spent by their local government. And that's the end of the comment. And as I read that, I don't see, I do see Alex Crowley indicating.
Mr. Crowley, go ahead and speak.
Thank you, council members. Alex Crowley, Director of Economic Sustainable Development. I just wanted to share a couple of anecdotes. One is a business that had to spend upwards of the 50% of its original business loan to set up the grease interceptor, and how much of a burden that was at the time of its inception, which would have been mitigated significantly by the work that CBU has done recently. So, so that, that's a, you know, example of sort of a before that could have been mitigated. And then separately, an anecdote of a business that basically was stuck. They could not improve their plumbing. They could not improve, improve their interior sink infrastructure, because any of that activity would have triggered a, an investment in, in a grease interceptor from which they'd been grandfathered. And as a result, that business had been unable to sell. With CBU's work, they were able to put their business on the market, sell their business. And now we have actually an Ivy Tech culinary student taking over the space and improving that business and, and really setting it up for success in the future. So I would simply like to really thank Vic and his team for their creativity here and their work in smoothing out the process of creating a path forward for a lot of businesses that we need in Bloomington that help our economy. And it's really tribute to them and their creativity to, to help us do this. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Are there other members of the public who would like to speak to ordinance 2027? Second call for public comment. Mr. Lucas, are there any other takers? Final call. All right, with that, we'll come back to council for further questions or debate. Are there any other questions on ordinance 2027? I have one if nobody else does. Okay, yeah, I'd like to know, Mr. Kelson, can you tell us a story of an example of a business that had not complied with a grease interceptor, you know, requirement or a need, and what kind of problem that caused for CBU?
James or Jason, do you have one? If you don't, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Take it, Jason. Okay, well, it's actually not, not typically a, a single instance. Well, actually, I do have one. And I won't name any names, but.
I don't need, I don't need names, just examples.
But about three or four years ago, we had a problem with a restaurant that did not have an interceptor, and it was a restaurant that made quite a lot of grease. And next door to them, they were on a small, they were one of, they were the, they were downstream of a daycare facility and on the same small sewer main on that collection ladder, lateral. And what happened is the grease plugged up the sewer main, and they actually had a backup into the daycare. We were able to clean it out, but that sort of thing is prevented when we have recent, when we have proper grease retention devices installed.
Maybe I should ask more specifically, can you quantify some of the costs of a business not complying with having an interceptor? How much does it cost ratepayers?
Well, it costs quite a lot. We actually have expensive vehicles that we have to drive around to clean sewers when, when we have sewer backups or when we have a lot of grease in lines. And that happens a lot downtown with some of our older sewers. And, and we have those trucks out all the time for trying to prevent blockages that can cause sanitary sewer overflows. So there's a number of different things. We're regulated on the number of overflows that we have. Item wants us to have, have zero. We try to have as few as we can. Part of that is keeping those, keeping the sewers flowing. So the, but, you know, we have to maintain expensive equipment for cleaning out sewers. We have to maintain, we have to maintain, pay for the staff that does that sort of maintenance. And we also have the issue of, and I don't know how to put a dollar value on it, but we also have the issue of sanitary sewer overflows contaminate the surface water. They also can be a threat to human health if, if people should happen to be in contact with that, with that sewage. So it's difficult to wrap a real detailed number together, and it really isn't so much a thing of, you know, it's rare for a single entity to cause a problem. It's much more common that when you have a lot of them in a concentrated area like you do downtown, this is a problem that was persistent years ago. We used to have, you know, grease balls occasionally. We used to have sewers blocking all the time and those kinds of things. So over time, as we take out this 20,000 or 30,000 gallons a month of grease, we are saving money by doing this, but it's, it's kind of a, something that happens over the whole area rather than a particular.
In other words, what you're saying is that our costs would be much greater capital-wise years down the road when we had to dig up an entire street to replace a main because it was full of fog.
Certainly.
Is that the idea?
Yeah.
Because otherwise, you have to have those trucks anyway, because there's no such thing as a system without overflows, right?
That's true. Well, we might have fewer.
Fewer, sure. I mean, I guess there's a standard. I just, just trying to understand sort of the, I mean, it does seem reasonable to say that interceptors preserve the overall longevity of the system.
And maintain its, its operational integrity.
Got it. Thank you. Any other further questions, or I'll open the floor to debate on ordinance 2027? First call? Second call? Seeing no comments, we'll go to a vote on ordinance 2027. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that ordinance passes unanimously. Thanks to everyone from Utilities. We appreciate your presence tonight. Thanks, Mr. Kelson, for the presentation, et cetera.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Madam Parliamentarian?
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 20-21 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please read? Please call the roll on the motion to introduce.
Yes, Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
That motion carries. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Yes, ordinance 2021 to amend Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, and Storm Sewers and Title 17 Construction Regulations of the Bloomington Municipal Code, deleting Chapter 1208 Excavations and replacing it with Chapter 1208 Use of Right-of-Way and adding a new Chapter 1210 Enforcement and Penalties and deleting three sections of Chapter 1204 General Regulations and revising one section of Chapter 1708 Administration and Enforcement. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance updating Title 12 and Title 17 does four things. First, Chapter 1208 titled Excavations is repealed and replaced with the new Chapter 1208 titled Use of the Right-of-Way. The purpose behind this change is to ensure that language has been added to each section of this chapter that encompasses excavation in the right of way as well as use of the right of way. Use of the right of way includes storage of equipment or materials in closing a street, sidewalk, bike lane, or other lane of traffic. Second, it deletes three sections of Chapter 1204 which deal with walkarounds, as that topic is included in the new Chapter 1208. Third, it deletes a portion of, of section of Chapter 1708, which includes permit fee provisions as the deleted items are included in the new Chapter 1208. Fourth, it establishes a new chapter of the Bloomington Municipal Code, Chapter 1210, entitled Enforcement and Penalties, which provides more efficient and specific enforcement procedures. Please note, this ordinance was revised after release in the legislative packet but before introduction at the October 7, 2020 regular sessions. Your Transportation Committee recommendation for Amendment 1 to ordinance 2021 was due pass 400. And your committee recommendation on the ordinance as amended was due pass 400.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 20-21 be adopted.
Second.
All right, here to present is whom?
Good evening, council. Thanks for your time tonight. My name is Neil Hopper. I'm the interim transportation and traffic engineer in the planning and transportation department. A number of staff members have put work into this ordinance, but tonight in this meeting, I'm joined by Public Improvements Manager Sarah Gomez, also from planning and transportation. Ms. Gomez is truly the subject matter expert for this topic, so I'm going to hand things over her for presentation.
Thank you.
I forgot to unmute myself. Apologies. Thank you, Neil. Good evening, everyone. This is Sarah Gomez here, Public Improvements Manager for Planning and Transportation Department, and I'm here to present on the Title 12 Updates, Ordinance 20-21. The purpose of Title 12, Chapter 1208, title Excavations is to ensure staff has a permit for excavation in the city right of way from utility companies, developers, contractors, and constituents who need to excavate in the city right of way. And the conditions of the permit ensure that insurance and bonding are in place and repairs to excavations are to a standard that protect public facilities. For an example, Title 12 Purpose, I included photos on this slide. The photo on the left is an example of a street cut repair that is done to the city standard, and the photo on the right is an example of what can happen to public facilities if 12.0 didn't exist, showing an improperly patched street cut. The Planning and Transportation Department has been discussing revisions to Chapter 12 for a few years, and the discussion of revisions was in response to staff concerns regarding the fee schedule enforcement and lack of right-of-way use language. These discussions resulted in the list of goals shown on this slide to address staff concerns. There has been an addition to these goals over the last year, and that addition includes updating the language about sidewalk closures and walkarounds. And I will go over some of the more significant updates that address the goals set forth in the upcoming slides. As well as addressing staff concerns, the goals and proposed changes are relevant to the following programs from the Chapter 6 of the Comprehensive Plan. Enhance the standards for maintenance of traffic and ADA compliance approvals. Manage right-of-way use and excavation policies, permits, and work to meet desired standards and specifications. And inspect all capital projects, city and non-city to assure compliance with applicable standards and specifications. After review and analysis, such as researching right-of-way permitting and use code for similar cities, comparing fees using the current fee schedule to the fees using the proposed fee schedule, reviewing other violation enforcement language within the Bloomington Municipal Code, and coordinating with public work staff regarding right-of-way use and reconstruction requirements, as well as discussions with various stakeholders regarding the walk-around language, staff came up with a Chapter 12.08 and 12.10 draft. The draft includes newer small updates as well as larger updates as highlighted on this and following slides. The first is right-of-way use. We do not currently have a mechanism to charge fees for right-of-way use or issue fines when maintenance of traffic plans aren't followed or the right-of-way is used without permission, causing issues for the public. We would like to require a fee for contractors to use the right-of-way to reflect the inconvenience that is caused to the public and staff time spent reviewing and following up on right-of-way use. Secondly, IMUTCD or Indiana Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices compliant maintenance of traffic plans are already required in practice. This provision would codify our current practice of requesting this for street, excuse me, lane, bike lane, and sidewalk closures. The image on the slide, slide is an example from Chapter 6 of the IMUTCD that shows temporary traffic control for a one-lane closure utilizing flaggers. Lastly, we would like to codify requirements for contractors to leave us with a better finished product. For example, when developers build new buildings and hardskates, we are frequently left with cobbled-together streets with patches here and there, typically for the various utility installations. We'd like to require complete mill pave and stripe for excavations that occur on streets paved in the last three years. I apologize. I think I might have skipped a slide here. Nope, I did not. Okay. So the next update is fees, and fees should reflect amount of city time and resources spent on permit review, inspections, paperwork, and added wear and tear to the city's infrastructure. For example, fiber boring project does take time to inspect and does cause undue wear and tear on the infrastructure, but $0.75 per lineal foot leads to permits that cost tens of thousands of dollars to supply a neighborhood with fiber. The fee is prohibitive. Fees should be reduced for projects that benefit the public but take costs away from city capital projects. Ie sidewalk projects should not be $1 per square foot resulting in thousands of dollars in fees for project that results in new sidewalks for the public. Digging in the dirt should not be as expensive as tearing up a brand-new road. Currently, it's $1 per square foot regardless of what you're digging into. And fees for excavation in the right-of-way are currently in Title 17, and we propose to move those to Title 12. We have included a comparison here of a project using the current fee structure versus a project using the new fee structure, and this particular project is used as our example due to the fact that the city did receive pushback from the developer about the costs related to these improvements. For a large project on the south side of the city in 2019, a large section of side path was closed and widened as an improvement. Additionally, two new sections of side path, each measuring approximately 150 feet, were built within a previously unimproved section of the city's right-of-way. This project provides the city nearly 1,200 feet of new or improved side path. Under our current fee schedule, the total fee would be $18,423.50 with $9,603 being a fee for constructing and improving the side path. Under the proposed fee schedule, the total fee would be $5,486.33 where $976 pertains to the new or improved sidewalk. As well as updating fees, we've proposed updated bond amounts. Bonds are in place in case a contractor fails to complete their work. The bond ensures the city has the ability to appear at the contractor's expense instead of at the city's expense. Although this is not one of our initial goals, we believed it would be more clear for staff and the public to do away with the current bond structure and make defined amounts for typical work that takes place. Currently, there is a required $5,000 bond that has a stipulation that any work that may cost more than $5,000 should be of the estimated cost plus 25%. It can be time-consuming for staff to check estimates for so many permits, and this will help eliminate some of that. Some work, such as street cuts, should require a larger bond due to the larger cost to do a street cut repair if the contractor doing the work failed to finish repairs or failed to repair a standard. The image on this slide shows a small portion of the proposed bond amount schedule. The new schedule includes right-of-way use bond amounts such as street closure, storage of materials, and sidewalk closures. Speaking of sidewalk closures, the next highlight is obstructing sidewalk and walk-around requirements. This is one of the more substantial changes we are proposing, and the photo here is of a walk-around. The proposed changes are intended to condense the previous changes, I'm sorry, the previous three sections that existed in Chapter 12.04 into one section and add language that requires compliance with Indiana Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, Public Right-of-Way Accessibility Guidelines, or PROAG, and Occupational Safety and Health Administration, or OSHA, guidance. Without going into excessive detail, I do want to relay a bit of information on how PROAG and IMUTCD relate to ADA guidelines in the context of temporary pedestrian routes. First, the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 states that the needs and control of all road users, motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians through a temporary traffic control zone shall be an essential part of any roadway construction, utility work, permit, and maintenance operations. Secondly, Public Right-of-Way Accessibility Guidelines, or PROAG, serves as current accepted guidance regarding pedestrian design aspects of public streets and highways such as crosswalks, curb ramps, street furnishings, pedestrian signals, parking, and other components of the public right-of-way for temporary and permanent facilities. The City of Bloomington adopted this as their official guidance for right-of-way accessibility. Lastly, the IMUTCD standard states that the needs and control of all road users, motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians within the highway, including persons with disabilities, in accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act through a temporary traffic control zone shall be an essential part of highway construction, utility work, maintenance operations, and the management of traffic incidents. All of these entities' guidelines echo the sentiment that temporary pedestrian facilities should be accessible for all pedestrians and are in line with the ADA guidance. By adding into code the requirement to meet these guidelines when submitting an application for a permit, we're then able to add the new enforcement chapter with the ability to issue a violation when these requirements aren't met in the field. And we'll go over enforcement later in the presentation with a specific situation regarding a walk-around. Excuse me. Other proposed changes to this part of code include the ability for the Transportation and Traffic Engineer to require additional items to a walk-around such as overhead protection and other safety precautions. In some cases, the Transportation and Traffic Engineer may require pedestrian detour or other accommodations in accordance with IMUTCD or OSHA guidelines. The IMUTCD gives the following guidance about pedestrians in and around work zones. Pedestrians should not be led into direct conflicts with worksite vehicles, equipment, or operations. Pedestrians should not be led into direct conflicts with mainline traffic moving through or around the worksite. Pedestrians should be provided with a safe, convenient travel path that replicates as nearly as possible the most desirable characteristics of sidewalks or footpaths. In this situation, the Transportation and Traffic Engineer shall take into consideration the city's comprehensive plan and transportation plan regarding pedestrian priority. Other considerations include avoiding additional pedestrian street crossings, added travel distance and options for detours, diversions, road narrowing, or road closures for automobiles in order to maintain connectivity for pedestrians. The Board of Public Works will also have the ability to require pedestrian detour based on the context of the construction site, taking into consideration the same factors as the Transportation and Traffic Engineer. Cases that need board approval are typical for sidewalk closures over 14 days in length. Lastly, and much anticipated by many, the addition of penalties in the form of fines for failure to maintain an approved maintenance traffic plan, which leads me to the next proposed change to Title 12, the addition of an Enforcement and Penalties chapter. The overall purpose behind the removal of the section titled Violations and the addition of Chapter 12.10 Enforcement and Penalties is to have enforcement procedures in place that are more consistent with enforcement procedures in other chapters of city code that allow staff to be more efficient and specific when issuing fines. Currently, when code is violated, enforcement is carried out through letters issued from the city's legal department. Having enforcement procedures in place for staff to be able to directly issue a legal department-approved notice of violation will be more efficient. These procedures are more consistent with enforcement procedures in other chapters of city code as well. We should be able to have stiffer penalties for more egregious infractions as well as a violation schedule to detail those fines. The current code violations has, and I quote, "a penalty in an amount not to exceed $100 per day." But the proposed code will be an initial fine which would be up to $2,500 per day. And if a contractor continued to violate a provision, the maximum per-day fine would continue to double until it reached $7,500. If still in violation each day, subsequent fine would continue until the violation was remedied. Currently, we only have the ability to fine for excavations without a permit because the current code is only about excavations in the right-of-way. Since proposed code includes types of use, types of uses of the right-of-way, we added fines for those uses. For example, we added "failure to maintain approved maintenance traffic plan" to the list of violations. The photo on the slide is an example of a situation where a walk-around was required to be in place during construction of a building. The walk-around maintenance of traffic plan was approved during the permitting processes and approved by the Board of Public Works. This approved plan was not adhered to, and we had no mechanism in code to fine or issue a stop-work order. With proposed code, as stated previously and shown on the slide, failure to maintain approved maintenance traffic plan, including but not limited to maintaining compliant traffic control devices, this situation would have warranted a fine. In this particular case, there would have been multiple infractions and fines. Under the Proposed Enforcement Procedures Section of code, we have added the ability to issue a stop-work order. In this example case, we may have issued a stop-work order if we had the ability due to the ongoing issues. Although what we are shooting for is the fine, for the fine to get the responsible party to take action that permanently remedies a violation, it will be beneficial to have the stop-work order as an option. And I did want to add that a question that had previously come up about contractors being, you know, maybe surprised or a bit of pushback about fines and just say that they're working at other municipalities, they should be quite used to this type of fine structure, you know, receiving fines for not having permits or not maintaining traffic control and things of that nature. So I did add a slide here just to quickly go over Amendment Number 1. This amendment was submitted by Councilmembers Rosenbarker and Piedmont Smith. They worked with Neil and I on the language, and we are in favor of and appreciate their attention to this section of the update request. Just real quickly, in excess of 24 hours has changed to period or periods totaling 24 hours or more. There is now an ability to require a walk-around for less than 24 hours if it's to facilitate access in high-use pet areas or other contexts. There's also, in addition, to provide an eight-foot walk-around in the downtown overlay when possible. And then the next one is addition of language that the walk-around remain unobstructed unless otherwise approved during review for use in situations like, such as construction entrance that will be having construction traffic go across the walk-around. Of course, we would want that to be minimized, but that is something that happens quite a bit, especially in the downtown area. And then we also, there's also the addition and change of the his or her designee to their designee to code to address the binary, non-binary language. And that brings me to the end of my presentation. Thank you all for your time and consideration of the proposed Title 12 Updates, which we believe meets the stated goals as well as meeting guidance from Chapter 6 of the Comprehensive Plan. Thank you again, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Before we go to questions, let's hear the report of the Transportation Committee, Councilwoman Rosenbarker. If you could unshare the screen.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thanks for the very thorough presentation, Ms. Gomez. I we, so the Transportation Committee met twice to discuss this ordinance. Our main focus was on the portion about walk-arounds, so we have an amendment to be introduced later. And Ms. Gomez touched on those parts that kind of kept us going another week on this. We like the addition of fines because it has, I would say, come to our attention that it's been hard to enforce some things in the code around the use of right-of-way and closing that space. So this should be a good addition to make sure, you know, everyone's doing the right thing and pedestrians and bicyclists are safe as can be when construction is going on. So that's pretty short and sweet, I would say, but we were all on board for 00 for this ordinance.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there questions on ordinance 2021? Looking for council members with questions? Not seeing any council members with questions? Surprised that I'm not seeing any councilors with questions? Councilwoman Sims?
Thank you. Actually, what I wanted to ask about was the fee schedule and the comment that contractors should be used to these type of fees or fine schedules. I'm saying not fee, fine schedules because they work in other communities. I don't so much want to argue that point. I guess my question is, do we have plans from an education standpoint to inform the contractors? Is that something that they get when they apply for permits to do this work, or do we, are we making an effort to contact those we've done business with to make them aware of this new fine schedule?
Yes, the plan would be, once it passes through council, then we would be reaching out to a list of contractors and directing them to those changes to the code.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Further questions from council members? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for comment on ordinance 2021. Did you have a question, Councilwoman Rosenbarker?
President Volin, should I?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. We're going. I apologize. Yeah.
Okay.
The amendment's in order.
A little slow in that. Okay. President Volin, I would like to move to introduce Amendment 1 for ordinance 2021.
Okay.
Motion in a second.
Thank you.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. So as Ms. Gomez discussed on her slide, Councilmember Piedmont Smith and I are introducing an amendment just to make it a little more clear about walk-around requirements and adding a little more language so that we really focus on prioritizing pedestrian safety. So before this amendment, it says if any area is blocked for a period in excess of 24 hours, a walk-around would be required. And now we're just sort of saying, or periods totaling 24 hours, trying to get around some construction that happened usually in the downtown area, but that is closed during the workday but over a period of days. So something like eight to five every day for four days would then need a walk-around or a detour if the traffic and transportation engineer decided that. So that is the main part of the changes. Those are in the packet in red if you have any, if you have any questions there.
All right, are there any questions for members on, for members for Amendment 1? Any more questions? Councilwoman Sims?
Thank you. I only have one. It's probably more of a clarification. With regard to the five-feet-wide walk-around, and then a couple sentences lower, within the downtown overlay, a walk-around of eight feet in width should be provided when possible. I won't take issue with that. I just kind of want to know what was the thought process of the requirement of five feet and the suggestion of eight feet when possible. And I'm also thinking in terms of enforcement for what's possible, what's not possible. How is that determined? So what was the thought process with the required five feet but with the possible option or should be eight feet when possible?
Sure. So the five feet comes from the PROAG guideline. But that's the, that's the width of a walk-around that should be required. But then there's, there's an advisory guideline that says in areas with high pedestrian use, you should try to do an eight-foot, or like in downtown areas, you should try to do an eight-foot-wide walk-around because there are more people. So like really, when you think about five feet, it's like two people can walk side by side, and an eight feet would just give you a little more space to not really be like single file both. And an eight feet would just give you a little more space to not really be like single file both directions. So we thought we would take that advisory guideline and put it as a suggestion in in the amendment in the code. And then that discretion would be up to the traffic and transportation engineer about whether or not it's possible.
So does that trigger a violation and thus a fine?
No, it's just, it's possible we would do that. So it wouldn't, you wouldn't have a fine because it's just a suggestion, basically. I mean, I think, and Ms. Gomez could maybe comment on it, but I think she would work. She would decide that. So then, right? If there needed to be an eight foot wide one, or if that is doable, then that's what would be required of the developer.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes, I'll just say that the eight feet, it is a should statement. And when we're talking about, you know, language that's that's specific, if that were to be a shall statement, then that would be a, you know, a shall, they have to do eight feet in that area. And so putting in the should gives us that little bit of wiggle room. And no, there would not be any sort of fine for not being able to meet the should requirement.
Okay, I guess I'm wondering what would motivate me as a contractor to do eight feet if that was my discretion? And I'm okay with it. I mean, it just kind of seems a little extra to me if we don't require. And I understand the intent, I think. But can you explain that a little bit? What would motivate a contractor to decide if it's possible?
Um, so I don't, I don't think that the contractor in many cases is going to be motivated to put in a walk around at all ever. And so this is more us working with the contractor. So when we're looking at the plans that they submit, we're going to be looking at the area and saying, what makes sense? What kind of equipment do they need in here? Do they need to set a crane? Do they need to store materials? Those types of things and what space we actually think that they truly need for that work. You know, of course, with their input on that, you know, we have to understand that they they do have safety in mind as well. So ultimately, it would be up to staff to say, in this particular situation, we think that you could probably fit in an eight foot walk around. Work on getting us a plan that shows that. And then we would go from there. So it's not necessarily a motivation for them to do it. It's us working with them.
So would that then become a requirement and a permitting process? Potentially?
Yes.
And we could do that even though it says should as opposed to shall?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Councilwoman Piedmont Smith?
I just wanted to follow up on the questions from Councilmember Sims. Ms. Gomez, do I understand correctly that the developer or whoever is in charge of the, you know, encroachment on the right of way comes up with a plan in consultation with staff of how they're going to navigate the pedestrian and vehicular traffic? And then that plan becomes what they have to stick to. And if they don't stick to that plan, they're fined. Is that, is that accurate?
That is accurate. I'll put in just the caveat that if there's a plan in place and through the construction process, we find, or maybe we wouldn't find, but the contract would find there to be some sort of issue with the way it has been approved when it's happening, so they can see that, hey, this, this particular thing is not safe. It doesn't work. Then we would work with them on what can we do to change it to make it better? But otherwise, yes, they need to stick to the plan. Otherwise, they can be fined.
So if if they work with staff and there's enough space for an eight foot walk around, and this is then part of their plan, then they could potentially be fined if they then reduce that to five feet.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. And just as a comment, as as one of the sponsors of the amendment, I think the the eight feet also allows potentially two individuals who utilize wheelchairs to be next to each other or pass each other. So that's another consideration.
Thank you for that answer. And I guess I was getting into downtown overlay. That eight feet is probably more or less required depending on the traffic. So I was more concerned about the shall versus the should. So thank you.
Thank you. Further questions on the amendment? Councilwoman Skambaluri?
Thank you. About two thirds of the way down the page, the walk around shall remain unobstructed at all times unless otherwise approved by the transportation and traffic engineer they're designee. Is that? I think this is a Ms. Gomez's question. Is there a formal process for that? Is that assumed to be in writing? They have to be granted that exception in writing? Can it be verbal? In other words, what's implied in that? But allows us to be crystal clear in our expectations all around.
I apologize. I did not hear the very first part of your question, so I'm missing the the crux of it all here.
Oh, sorry. This is regarding, third paragraph down. The walk around shall remain unobstructed at all times unless otherwise approved. Is there a particular process for that already in place? Is that written? Is that verbal? Do we need to be more explicit in what kind of permission is required there? Just so everyone's, I mean, one of the strengths of this legislation is that it clarifies expectations. So I'm wondering if we need to clarify there. Is it written? Is it verbal? Is it both?
I think that's a fair question. Typically, when there's a long term closure of the right of way is when we're going to run into a situation where construction traffic is going to be crossing a walk around. And so in those instances, they they will need to go to the Board of Public Works for approval. And so then it would be on public, publicly documented at the at that meeting.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions on the amendment? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for comment on amendment one to ordinance twenty twenty one. If there's anyone who'd like to speak to this amendment, please type into the chat or use the raised hand function in Zoom. First call? Second call? Mr. Lucas, is there anyone who would like to speak to amendment one?
I see at the moment now.
Final call for public comment on amendment one? We'll come back to the council now for second round of questions or for debate. Is there any final comment on amendment one? Second call? Councilwoman Sims?
Just something I neglected. I think when I began commenting or questioning, I forgot to thank Ms. Gomez for her presentation. I thought it was very thorough and thanks for answering the question. So just a bit of formality on my part. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Is there any other comment on amendment one? Councilwoman Smith?
I just, I wanted to thank Ms. Gomez.
Hold on. This is the amendment, not the whole ordinance.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
Okay. This is on amendment one. Final call for the amendment? Will the clerk please call the roll on amendment one to ordinance twenty twenty one?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Skambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
That amendment passes. We go back now to the ordinance as amended? Are there any further questions? Councilwoman Piedmont Smith?
I move amendment two to ordinance twenty twenty one. Second. This is just
A motion in a second.
This is just a very simple amendment to change all the the gender pronouns to non-binary pronouns in the whole ordinance.
Are there any questions for Councilwoman Piedmont Smith?
Oh, and I should say it's co-sponsored by myself and Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Okay, is there a question for either co-sponsor? Is there any comment from staff?
Staff is supportive.
Thank you. If there's no questions for members, we'll go to the public for comment on amendment two. First call? Second call? Final call? And we're back to the council for final comment? See, no, Councilwoman Piedmont Smith?
Well, I just wanted to say it was actually Ms. Gomez's idea, so thank you for that.
Any other comments on amendment two? Will the clerk please call the roll on amendment two to ordinance twenty twenty one?
Yes, Councilmember Skambaluri?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Said everyone, okay. That amendment passes. We go now back to the ordinance as amended. Any questions on the package as a whole, twenty twenty one?
Councilmember Volan?
Yes.
I just wanted to make a comment that I I really appreciate, and I, we kind of went past it, sorry. But I really appreciate the addition of the theirs versus the his or hers language. So thank you for for putting that forth.
Well, I would simply move that thanks over to the sponsors and to the members who approved it and say that I think that's important to be inclusive. So thanks for for suggesting it. With that, are there any other questions from members on the ordinance as a whole? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for comment on ordinance twenty twenty one as amended. Is there any public comment? Please use the raise hand function in Zoom or speaking to the chat. Type into the chat rather. Mr. Lucas, is there anyone to speak on this issue?
Yes, I do see a request from Greg Alexander, who should now be able to unmute himself.
Mr. Alexander, please go ahead.
Awesome. Thanks. Hi, I'm Greg Alexander. This is exciting, you know, about time, dare I say. I have concerns. I, first, I've really got to say, this isn't personal. I've seen three generations of public improvement managers with substantively similar attitudes, and that's across all the staff. I have a lot of problems with with roles. But it's, it doesn't much matter who fills the role. It's it's how the bureaucracy functions that matters. But staff's consistent indifference to pedestrian safety has caused a most personal injury. My my kids have been walking in the street. There is nothing more personal to me than that injury. So I've been working on this for a few years since I've had kids. I was first told by three public improvement managers ago that they can issue stop work orders for violations, but they choose not to, which I don't know. I I've been told that personally. I've been told that the the land use committee has been told that. The Bike and Pet Safety Commission has been told that. And I, I can't believe I'm the only one I rate about that. How could you choose not to enforce the law if you have the ability? But earlier this year, I decided to report a continuing violation every day for three weeks. And suddenly I had three different members of the engineering division telling me they absolutely have no enforcement mechanism. So you know, it'll be true. Now they'll have the ability to enforce the law. But would they continue to decide not to, you know, without citizens doing that labor of reporting repeated violations? Will they decide that a warning was sufficient? Will construction sites by my house be the only ones that have enforcement? Just the fluke that somebody repeats repeatedly complains, you know? I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know. I'm optimistic, I guess, cautiously, you know? Because some of these problems are continuing and are at the discretion of staff already. Like sidewalks were closed on college between fourteenth and seventh for five straight years across three different public improvement managers. Like, that's, that's not an exaggeration. Literally, one project or another closed the sidewalk on one side of the street over that, that three, three eight so mile stretch. And my kids were walking in the street for that. And people were acting like I was crazy to be upset about this, you know? I, I that was then, you know? So just recently, the sidewalk at the old Rhino's building, the the construction site just south of the bus station, it was closed for a year until a few months ago. The bike lane was closed too. You know, it's the sidewalk at the Four Street Garage north of the bus station is still closed today. It was so exciting to hear Ms. Gomez read that section from the the manual of uniform traffic control devices. I've long wanted to shout that that particular section in a number of people's faces. It's just, we need to offer a compelling alternative for pedestrians when the sidewalk is is closed for construction. People can't be just walking in the street. You can't just add people to to jaywalk in the middle of of college under the train bridge. That's, that's not acceptable engineering practice. And it says so in the MUTCD. So I'm so glad to hear that that acknowledged. But I am absolutely as jaded as it is possible for an activist to be. My children have walked in the streets. I guess I'll be going to the Board of Public Works and coming back to tell you guys how it goes. We'll see. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on ordinance twenty twenty one as amended? Second call? Final call for comment on ordinance twenty twenty one as amended? Seeing none, we'll come back to the council for second round of questions or for debate. Is there any final comment on ordinance twenty twenty one as amended? Councilwoman Piedmont Smith?
I'd just like to thank the staff, especially Ms. Gomez, for her work on this. It is, it is overdue legislation. It's long overdue that we have some recourse to find people who block the pedestrian right of way. And I think this will improve matters for pedestrians throughout the city when there's construction going on. But I think also we should keep an eye on it and see if it really does have sufficient teeth and if there, there may be other requirements that we might add in in future years. So let's, I think this will do a good job, but let's keep an eye on it.
Thank you for the debate on ordinance twenty twenty one. Second call? Final call? I will just say I wanted to also thank the department for bringing this forward, the work of Ms. Gomez, Mr. Copper. It is overdue. I would even go so far as to say it's long overdue. The noise ordinance used to be something similarly unable to be enforced. I think I brought this up at committee. And once we instituted escalating fines for noise violations, it became a lot more effective to enforce. I am more than sympathetic to Mr. Alexander's position. But it did have to start with the enforcement. I can, I am not surprised that, you know, prior officials of the city charged with maintaining the public right of way might have thought that there was nothing that could be done about it. There was something that could be done, but it didn't just require a change in law, it required a change in attitude towards the primacy of users of the street, that there was or should be a hierarchy where cars have priority. If this goes some way to equalizing, making a street more complete, which I think is a very strong contribution to, then I think we will, at last, be satisfactorily remedying a long overdue problem. With that, Councilmember Flaherty?
Thanks. Yeah, I also just wanted to thank Mr. Copper and Ms. Gomez in the Transportation Committee for all their work. This is an issue I had followed up with staff quite a bit on earlier this year as well and had some work with them. So thanks to the folks here tonight, as well as other city staff for working together with us to address some of these things. I share Councilmember Piedmont Smith's sentiment as well, that I think, as well as Mr. Alexander, that we need to just look at this over time and see how it's working. A lot of this was kind of structured. It's a nuanced and kind of complicated topic sometimes. So discretion is inherent or needed for engineering. And I think, you know, staff and Transportation Committee members did their best to build in the values of our comprehensive and transportation plan, but whether or not we follow those exactly is kind of another question. It kind of is, you know, needs to be borne out over time. So we'll look at that over time. And just one issue in particular, I wanted to express a desire to make sure that we're mindful of is when the city is pursuing projects as developer or as a construction entity, we need to be sure that we are holding ourselves to the same standard that we hold everyone else to and that we, even if not following the exact same processes, that we're yeah, you know, following the same standards and if not setting the standard for what this should look like. So that in particular is an issue that I'll be keeping an eye on. So thanks again. I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Further debate on ordinance twenty twenty one? Final call. Will the clerk please call the role in ordinance twenty twenty one as amended?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenbarger? Oh, my gosh. So sorry. Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Scambaluri?
Yes.
And ordinance twenty twenty one is adopted. Thank you. We go down to the next item on our agenda.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance twenty eighteen be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the role in the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yeah.
And Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
All right, will the clerk please read my title and synopsis?
Ordinance twenty eighteen, to amend Title fifteen of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic regarding amending chapters fifteen, twelve, oh, one, oh, stop intersections to add several stop signs. Fifteen, twelve, oh, three, oh, pedestrian hybrid beacon signals to add a hybrid beacon signal. Fifteen, thirty-two, oh, eight, oh, no parking zones to add several no parking zones. Fifteen, thirty-two, one hundred, loading zones to delete several loading zones. Fifteen, thirty-two, one hundred, loading zones to add a loading zone. Fifteen, thirty-seven, oh, two, oh, applicability to delete several streets from Zone Eight. And fifteen, thirty-seven, oh, five, oh, fees to add provision about the timing of permit sales. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Title fifteen vehicles and traffic of the Bloomington Municipal Code and comes forth at the request of city staff and the Traffic Commission. The ordinance makes the following changes. It adds stop intersections to South Addison Lane, that's West Countryside Lane, and at South Delia Star Drive to South Delia Star Drive at West Countryside Lane. And at West Sunstone Drive to West Eventide Drive at South Addison Lane and at South Delilah Star Drive to South Flat Rock Road at South Addison Lane and to West Sunstone Drive at South Adams Street. It adds a new pedestrian hybrid beacon signal at the crossing of South Walnut Street and the Beeline Trail. It adds a new no parking zone on West Pinewood Drive from South Walnut Street to South Pinewood Lane on both sides of the street. It deletes several loading zones from the municipal code that are no longer in existence and corrects the time restrictions for a loading zone on West Fourth Street. It deletes the current residential neighborhood parking, residential neighborhood Zone Eight as that zone was absorbed by other zones by previous ordinance. It clarifies that the Parking Services Division has the authority to begin the neighborhood parking permit sales process for the upcoming year at any time. The Transportation Committee recommendation are as follows. Amendment one to ordinance twenty eighteen is due pass four zero zero. And the committee recommendation on the ordinance as amended is also due pass four zero zero.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance twenty eighteen be adopted.
Second.
Okay, I think I see Mr. Amir Farsi here to present ordinance twenty eighteen. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you. Hello, I'm Amir Farsi, Long Range Planner for the Planning and Transportation Department. Let me share my screen. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can see it.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Okay, the ordinance proposes various amendments to the Title fifteen of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic. Title fifteen is the title of the code, subject to frequent change and revisions. These proposals are the result of feedback from the Planning and Transportation Department, Legal Department, and Parking Services. The purpose of these recommendations is to address issues that have come to our staff attention through public requests, commission recommendations, or hundred eighty day orders. Some items are related to safety issues, improving visibility for people, pedestrian and bicyclist safety, traffic calming, and housekeeping changes. The staff worked with the Mayor's Office and the Council's Office to present Title fifteen more than one time a year, up to three times a year. This request for changes to Title fifteen was presented to the Traffic Commission and Parking Commission in September twenty twenty and to the Council Transportation Committee on October twenty twenty twenty. The ordinance makes the following changes. It adds some stop intersections, a new pedestrian hybrid beacon signal, and a new no parking zone. The ordinance edits several loading zones that are no longer in existence and the residential neighborhood Zone Eight as that zone was absorbed by other zones by previous ordinance. The ordinance corrects the time restriction for one loading zone. And the ordinance clarifies that the Parking Services Division has the authority to begin the neighborhood parking permit sales process for the upcoming year at any time. The details and maps are included in the meeting packet. Please let the staff know if you have any questions, and let me introduce the staff who are in this room meeting. Wes Rosenbarger, Planning Services Manager, Michelle Wall, Parking Services Director, Rayon Cox, Parking Enforcement Manager, and Copper, Interior and Transportation and Traffic Engineer. Thank you.
You're muted.
So sorry. All right, are there any questions for ordinance twenty eighteen from members?
Should I go over the report?
Thank you. I keep forgetting. Transportation Committee report, Councilwoman Rosenbarger.
Thank you very much. I actually don't have a lot to add, though. This is pretty much a routine update of Title fifteen. Again, I'm rather new here, but I've heard this happens on a regular basis. We talked about the stop signs, the no parking zones. There are pictures of all this in the packet if you all want to check those out, or maybe you already have. We talked a little more about the hybrid beacon signal that has been installed on Walnut Street at the B-Link, which is the entrance to Switchyard Park on South Walnut. We also talked about a little bit how these updates happen and how we might want them to happen in the future. That's more an administrative question, I think, but just that how we keep all these lists in code, and it might make sense to not keep lists in code sometimes, but we would talk about that at a different time. So this ordinance was recommended due pass four zero zero. Thank you.
Okay, I've unmuted. Now, are there questions from members on ordinance twenty eighteen? Anybody? Seeing none, we'll go to the public for comment on ordinance twenty eighteen. Is there any public comment?
Mr. President?
Oh, sorry, is there an amendment?
Yes, you're sponsoring it.
A little asleep. I'm sorry. I'm not getting a lot of sleep lately. We'll do public comment in a minute. Let's go to amendment one. Need somebody to propose it?
I move amendment one to ordinance twenty eighteen.
Second.
Motion in a second. Will you please go ahead and present it?
May I ask the staff to present it since it was at the request of the staff and I'm not a sponsor?
You may. Mr. Farsi, would you please explain amendment one?
Sure, let me share my screen. Yeah, this is amendment one that Councilmember Volan sponsored. It is mainly, actually, yeah, the following are designated as residential neighborhood permit parking zones, and any streets within a zone boundary as delineated by a street shall be considered within a designated zone. So it is mainly to include the streets within the zone to be eligible for the neighborhood parking permits.
Thank you, Mr. Farsi. If you'd unshare the screen, I remember now my own amendment, and I'm ashamed of this, but the gist of it is, it was born out of a concern that several members of the public have who own houses on Seventeenth Street, which are notionally in the Garden Hill parking zone, but were legally gerrymandered out of it simply because they didn't have an address that was not on Seventeenth Street. It's kind of hard to explain, but they're obviously in Garden Hill. They're on the south side of Seventeenth Street, but their houses were excluded. So this would, in this case, affect, I think, six out of ten structures on Seventeenth Street, among others, but staff also requested it because, generally speaking, it's a little bit more it's a little easier to enforce neighborhood zones when they're, you know, sort of evenly drawn just so it's easy to describe the zone. So with that, either Mr. Farsi or I are happy to answer questions on amendment one. Any questions? I didn't think there'd be any, but just in case. All right, is there any member of the public who'd like to speak on amendment one to ordinance twenty eighteen? Second call. Final call on amendment one. Seeing no public comment, we'll come back to the council for debate. Is there any final comment on amendment one to ordinance twenty eighteen? Last call. Will the clerk please call the role in amendment one?
Yes, Councilmember Volan?
Why, yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yeah.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
That amendment passes. Thank you. We come back now to the ordinance as amended. Is there any public comment on ordinance twenty eighteen as amended? Please raise your hand in Zoom or type into the chat. Mr. Lucas?
Yes, first we have Greg Alexander, who should now be able to unmute himself.
Hi, thanks. I'm Greg Alexander. I mean, this is obviously a progress, right? This is a good amendment or ordinance here. If we're talking about Walnut and the B-Link, there's like a Hawk Hybrid Pedestrian Activated Beacon there that's supposed to stop traffic on Walnut College. I don't know which it's called down there, actually. And it, I just figure I'd be remiss if I didn't, you know, give a little report from that because I've used it a number of times, and it, you know, obviously it's an improvement over what was there. You know, staff is trying to do something about that, and I really appreciate that. But the simple fact of the matter is, it doesn't work when you press the button. The light changes very quickly, but cars don't stop. They don't necessarily even slow down. If you wait, eventually cars will stop, you know? The first car that sees it might not stop, maybe the tenth car stops, and then the cars behind them stop. But it's what's known as a multiple threat crossing because, you know, you can see the car that's in the lane right by you, and you're going to walk in front of that car. Well, you can't see past that car necessarily to see whether the next lane of traffic has stopped. And on a road like College and Walnut where that'll be forty mile an hour traffic quite regularly, that's lethal. It's literally, that's why it's called a multiple threat intersection. It's something that engineers are very aware of. It's a known problem with road design that when you have like four lanes of traffic like that, and you have a pedestrian crossing across it, it's going to be very challenging for pedestrians. There's literature that says that Hawk lights are like ninety-nine percent effective, and I honestly, I I can't imagine that a licensed engineer would believe such malarkey. But it's, obviously, it's completely ineffective. You go down there and try it, you'll see some people do stop sometimes, but a lot of times, people, you know, the moment the pedestrian goes through, they start going again, even if there's more pedestrians waiting to go through. And so what we need is a little bit of bone or backbone. We need enforcement, honestly, I think, would help a little bit, but we need an excitement and eagerness on the part of staff to apply traffic calming, because they're going to seem radical. Engineers are not going to be excited to do this because they know drivers will complain, but you can calm Walnut and College. It doesn't have to be a failed pedestrian crossing. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. Further public comment on ordinance twenty eighteen as amended? Final call for public comment? Seeing none, we come back to council for further questions or debate. Is there any final comment? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I wanted to follow up on the public comment we received.
Please do.
The Hawk signal, I believe there's a Hawk signal at Allen Street and South Walnut, but the one that we are now putting into code is further south at the B-Link, and I think it's a different type of signal. Mr. Farsi, could you clarify what type of signal we are putting into code for, at the B-Link trail? And and Walnut Street?
Let me share my screen really quick. Yeah, here is the exact location at the intersection of, actually, at the crossing of South Walnut Street and B-Link Trail, and it goes to Switchyard Park, and yeah, it is a pedestrian hybrid beacon signal, and so I think we can provide more information about that, but I believe when people push the button, the lights turn red, and there is a sign here that tells drivers that they should have stopped, but
So is, is this considered a Hawk signal?
I can clarify, this is proper, you know, transportation traffic engineer. So a Hawk, the Hawk signal is another name for the pedestrian hybrid beacon, PHB. They are the same thing, so that is what is here at the B-Link. What is it? Allen Street is a, it's called a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, or an RRFP. So those are the two different ones that you've mentioned.
All right, so maybe there are some problems with cars not stopping at that Hawk signal. Something to keep our eyes on.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Rosenbarger?
Thank you. I also wanted to comment on that. We did at the Transportation Committee meeting discuss the Allen and Walnut street crossing, because that is where you hit the button, the light flashes yellow, and it, it's true that it can be a little terrifying, because you can't see that second lane of traffic going in one direction, right, when you're, when you are crossing. So I want to look into that and see if it's possible to get that changed, because Allen Street is a greenway, as I understand it. It costs money, like changing anything, and the alternative transportation budget in twenty twenty-one is very small, just like it has been in the past years. So it's just, sadly, as usual, a matter of we don't have funds to devote to things to increase pedestrian bicycle safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment on ordinance twenty eighteen as amended? Last call? I will say a couple things briefly. One, I want to thank Councilwoman Piedmont Smith for catching my air of my, my own amendment, which again was brought at the request of staff, but it was one that was also based on a concern from the public. So thank you for that. Also, there is another aspect of this ordinance that I am not too happy with, but didn't feel strongly enough to attempt to amend it out, and that's the final part about adding a provision for the timing of permit sales. I understand why Parking Services Director wanted, wants this flexibility. I think there are better ways to do it, but it's not really worth changing. It's just easier to let her begin to sell permits as early in the year as she sees fit. But I do think it's going to perhaps confuse the issue, especially when it comes to changing parking policy, which up until now has really been pivoted around August fifteenth, because that's when permits expire, because it's based on the school year. The other thing is that, in general, we were talking about ordinances like this, and yes, over the years, I have seen more than my share of Title fifteen ordinances, some of which used to run into the dozens of sections. And so to that end, you know, I and other members have begun talking with Planning and Transportation about how we can find a way to perhaps delegate the changing of stop signs and yellow curbs and the like, perhaps by stripping them out of code and putting them into an administrative section that can then be amended by, without an ordinance. I think that sometime in twenty twenty-one, it'd be worth exploring that possibility, because, you know, these have to come forward often enough, because there's so many nominal changes to code that we should really think about a way to make that, make this more administratively, more efficient. So I'm hoping that maybe we'll see the last of these Title fifteen changes sometime in twenty twenty-one, because we found a new way to manage them. With that, if there's no other members who'd like to comment, I'll call for a vote. Any final comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance twenty eighteen as amended?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yeah.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
And Wallin?
Yes. All right, that ordinance passes. Thank you to Mr. Farsi and Mr. Copper. Appreciate the presentation. We now move to legislation for first readings.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance twenty thirty-one be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please read, or please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
That's Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yeah.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Wallin?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yeah.
The motion carries. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Ordinance twenty thirty-one, to amend Title two of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel, inserting Chapter two point three five, establishing the Department of Engineering, and amending Chapter two point one four, titled Planning and Transportation Department. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance creates the Department of Engineering and eliminates the Transportation and Traffic Engineering Services Division from the Planning and Transportation Department.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that appropriation ordinance twenty oh seven be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please read, or please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yeah.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Wallin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Appropriation ordinance twenty oh seven, to specially appropriate from the General Fund Enhanced Access Fund, Social Waste Fund, or Solid Waste Fund, Risk Management Fund, and the Rental Inspection Program Fund, expenditures not otherwise appropriated, appropriating various transfers of funds within the Public Safety Telecommunication Fund, Alternative Transportation Fund, Parking Meter Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, Fleet Maintenance Fund, Police Pension Fund, and appropriating additional funds from the General Fund, Rental Inspection Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and the Risk Management Fund. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance appropriates various transfers of funds within the Public Safety Lit Fund, Non-Reverting Telecom Fund, Alternative Transportation Fund, Parking Meter Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, Fleet Maintenance Fund, Police Pension Fund. It also appropriates additional funds from the General Fund, Rental Inspection Program Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and Risk Management Fund.
Thank you, and I will be referring ordinance twenty thirty-one to the Admin Committee, Administration Committee, which will meet at six thirty on the twelfth of November, and Preparation Ordinance twenty oh seven to a Committee of the Whole to meet at seven thirty on the twelfth of November. By the way, we are having a meeting on Thursday the twelfth, because Veterans Day is on the eleventh. So unless there is a motion to do otherwise, Councilwoman Piedmont Smith?
I wanted to acquire us to the scheduling of the meeting of the Public Safety Committee for November twelfth.
Oh.
We refer to ordinance twenty twenty to a second.
I, I apologize, I did not think about this. Yesterday, we canceled our scheduling meeting, because it was a city holiday. Well, I, you know, I think the most logical thing would be to have it after the Committee of the Whole. But I don't know how long the Committee of the Whole should take. Councilwoman Six, Scambaluri, I'm looking for suggestions here.
You want to start, would it help to start a little earlier? So start the Admin Committee at five thirty?
I would be unavailable. So we'd have to have the Admin Committee later. We could certainly do Committee of the Whole at five thirty. Councilwoman Rosenbarger?
Sorry, I'm sorry. We can also do Public Safety first.
Yeah.
Well, the thing about the Public Safety Committee is I expect it to be the one that takes the most time. So that's generally why I want to put that last. Councilwoman Piedmont Smith?
Oh, I didn't have my hand raised, but
Well, then let me, let me suggest.
Two hours would probably be enough.
Then let me suggest five thirty for Committee of the Whole, six thirty for Admin Committee, and seven thirty for the Public Safety Committee, without, without agreeable to everyone.
Do you say those times again?
Five thirty for Committee of the Whole. Six thirty for Admin Committee, and seven thirty for Public Safety Committee. I did forget that that was coming back. Thanks for bringing that to my attention. Everyone okay with that? Any objections? Okay, with that, we now go to additional public comment. If there's any member of the public who'd like to speak to an item that is, to, on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, please use the raise hand function in Zoom or type into the chat. First call for public comment. Second call. Final call for public comment. And so with no public comment, we move to matters of council schedule. Mr. Lucas, what do we have in store for us?
I, I mean, we You all just sorted out the issues of council schedule that I was going to raise. Just a reminder for the public that the next, next week's meeting will take place on Thursday, November the twelfth, due to Veterans Day following, following on Wednesday. So that's a change from the normal pattern, and that was the only, only reminder I wanted to bring up.
Very good. With that, if there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
All in favor, voice vote, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all. Go get some rest. Good night.